Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting for Ipswich City Council. Today is the 14th of September 2023 and we're starting this meeting at 10am. I'll call attendance commencement, there's myself, councillor Kunselman, deputy mayor Milligan, councillor Fekner, councillor Doyle and councillor Tully, who are here. And I have a request from councillor Johnic for attendance via audio link. So that in accordance with section 254k of the Local Government Regulations 2012 and 8.6.2 of council's meeting procedures, policy councillor Nicole Jordan be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. So I'll move that. Do I have a second for that councillor Kunselman? All those in favour, please raise your hand and I acknowledge councillor Madsen, councillor Island here. It's unanimous in the room. I just want to check councillor Johnic that you can hear us.
I can, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the acknowledgement country. I ask councillor Kunselman to give us the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you Chair. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people.
Thank you councillor Kunselman. We're very fortunate this morning to have our opening prayer given to us by Pastor Matt Anstey from the Kruger Parade Baptist Church. So Pastor Matt, may I ask you, please come to the lectern.
Thank you Pastor. Do you mind saying your name, the church and any other thoughts before you lead us into prayer? Sure, Pastor Matt Anstey, Kruger Parade Baptist Church. Just a great thanks for welcoming us into this space and being able to pray this morning. As a church, we have some great links to the city of Ipswich with four of our members starting up neighbourhood just down the road here, including our associate pastor Luke. We've got a group making meals for the homeless on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We're down to earth now, so really good link to the city, but also in our local area, just loving the people, the diversity and the community that we're in, in that kind of Red Bank, Red Bank Plains kind of region. So thank you for all you do in serving our community and wanting for the best for the Ipswich region. And it's my honour to be able to open our time in prayer this morning. Let's bow. Look God, we thank you and we acknowledge your presence here amongst us. As we meet and decide the things that are going to be on the agenda today, Lord, I pray that you would give wisdom and insight into the councillors and the mayor to be able to make the right decisions for our city and its future. Lord, I thank you for the commitment that they have for Ipswich and for its flourishing. Lord, I pray that they might be humble in the way that they do their duties. They might be open in their ears and their hearts might be warmed towards leading in such a way that might see this city prosper. Lord, we thank you for your goodness and your grace for the beautiful place that we call home and we pray that you continue to work for the unity and the good of this city. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor Matt. And thank you so much for the work that Kruger Parade Baptist Church does for our community in the CBD, but also in our eastern suburbs as well. Thank you. We now move on to a leave of absence and councillor Island has requested a leave of absence from the council ordinary meeting next month, scheduled for the 26th of October, I understand. So you'd like to move that?
I'd like to move that I be granted a leave of absence from the council ordinary meeting on the 26th of October 23 for family reasons.
Thank you. I'll second that. I put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We move on to item four, which is condolence motion. Sorry, item five, it's a condolence motion. As I move a condolence motion for Mr Jim Shapcott. And before I start, I'd like to acknowledge Martin Shaw, the CEO of Wounded Heroes Australia, and his colleague Sue Luxwood, who are here in the public gallery today for this condolence motion and our warmest condolences to you both. You may not have heard of Jim Shapcott, but many of you would be familiar with the national organisation Wounded Heroes Australia, and you most certainly know of Lady Flo's famous pumpkin scones. You may have even had a capper at Jim's cafe in Bundamba. If the name Jim Shapcott doesn't ring any bells, it's because Jim made great things happen for others. A marketer credited with making Lady Flo's pumpkin scones famous, as well as running both of her senate campaigns. Jim also established the first lifestyle programme in Australia. James Douglas Shapcott, or Jim as he was known, also worked tirelessly on behalf of his fellow veterans as the founder of Wounded Heroes Australia. Jim was commissioned in 1966 into the army reserves, reaching the rank of captain. He was serving in the 214th Australian Infantry Battalion upon his retirement in 1973. Jim was deeply committed to those who serve and their families. He built wounded heroes from the first meeting under a tarp in 2007 into a national organisation supporting servicemen and women and their families. His life's work has impacted thousands of lives of those who answered the call of duty selflessly, and to many whose lives will never again the same. Born in 1940, Jim attended Blair State School and Ipswich Grammar School. Jim was an all-rounder, a prefect, vice captain of the 1st 15 rugby team, a platoon commander in cadets and captain of the swimming team. Jim married Elise in 1961 at St Mary's. They raised three children, Danielle, Megan and Ryan, who have three children of their own, Lauren, Georgia and Nicholas. I would like to extend my deepest condolences to all of you. Jim was no stranger to adversity. At 45, he survived a plane crash at Port Moresby. With a broken back and neck after eight months in Gold Coast Hospital, he went back to work with a modification to his office to include a stretcher. At 62, Jim was diagnosed with heart cancer. In a world first surgery performed by Dr Andrew Rainbird, he had his heart removed while they did quadruple bypass, where I'm told Dr Rainbird had his trusty textbook on the table. Jim's legacy lives on in Ipswich at Jim's Cafe at the Bundamba Support Centre and through his family. He was a giant among men with his selfless motto being, "It's all about them, not us". To Jim, on behalf of the city and the veteran community, I'll give you a final salute. You will be truly missed and most certainly remembered. Thank you. And thank you Martin and Sue for being here today. I now move on to item six, tributes. There are none. Item seven, presentations of petitions. There are none. Item eight, presentations and deputations. There are none. Item nine, public participation. There is none. We now move on to item 10, a matter of public interest. And we have a matter of public interest from councillor Nicole Johnic. So I'll hand over to you councillor, to move your matter of public interest.
Thank you Chair. I am proud to bring this matter of public interest to council today. Recently announced Ipswich Tribune editor and journalist, Mr Brian Banyan, was named a finalist in the Queensland Clarion Awards 2023 for his reporting on Indigenous affairs. Brian is one of three finalists for this category. Other finalists include Ben Smith from The Guardian Australia and Michael McKinnon from The Australian. To have one of our own local journalists under consideration for this prestigious state media award is truly outstanding. Mr Banyan won the Clarion Award for Indigenous issues reporting in 2016, was named a finalist for a Clarion Award last year for regional and community news reporting, and in 2015 for social issues reporting. He has won the Journalist Excellence Award for an individual journalist for the past two years at the Queensland Country Press Association Awards. Locally, print media has seen massive change over recent years. With the announcement of the Queensland Times closure, many were uncertain of its future locally. Today, we have several newly established publications, the Ipswich Tribune being one of them. Of course, there is now also a plethora of information available in the community via multiple methods, including social media. But because of this, trust in the content shared has declined. Now, one must read to inform themselves and form views from reliable sources. That is why it is extremely rewarding to see Mr Banyan being recognised for his efforts and outstanding journalism. In the words of Peter J Anderson, "High-quality independent news journalism which provides accurate and thoughtful information and analysis about current events is crucial to the creation of an enlightened culture that is able to participate meaningfully in society and in politics." So congratulations to Brian Banyan. Thank you.
The declarations of interest.
Thanks Chair. In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Fekner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items 15.6 and 15.7, which is the Ipswich Central Committee and the Special Ipswich Central Committee reports, the nature of my declarable conflict of interest, my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited. A plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room or the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Fekner. Councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items 15.6, report of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, and item 15.7, report of Special Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building the Ipswich Trades Hall is adjacent to council's CBD redevelopment project. As a result of that conflict, I will exclude myself from the meeting while the matter is debated and the vote taken.
Thank you very much councillor Madsen. Are there any other declarations of interest? No? Then we can move on to item 12, which is the confirmation of minutes. And item 12.1 is at the minutes. So I move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 24th of August 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any errors, corrections, amendments proposed? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Item 13 is a merrill minute. There is none. Item 14, business outstanding. There is none. So we now move on to item 15, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. And the first of these is 15.1, the Report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee. So I move that the council adopt the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, the eighth one, on the 5th of September 2023. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. In discussion on this, in particular, I point out one of the items that did come forward, which is the overview of council's approach to heritage for 2023. This is a study that we have discussed in council. We do heritage and heritage matters in many different areas. And I thought it was a good idea for us to come together to have a snapshot of the overview. And it'll, I think, assist us in going forward and what kind of heritage plan we're doing going forward, noting that we still have, I think, two notices of motion to come forward from, that were proposed by councillor Doyle and councillor Johnic, which will probably inform us as well. Is there any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. I now move on to item 15.2, the Report of the Governance and Transparency Committee for the 5th of December 2023. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
I'm just happy to move it as the recommendation before us.
Thank you very much. Councillor Madsen? Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? Yes councillor Tully?
Thanks Mayor. I'm just trying to bring it up. It's item 13.
Item? Yes.
Just trying to bring up the page number. I did have it written earlier.
Are we going to discuss anything confidential?
No, no.
So item 13 was the CEO's performance proposal?
Yeah, just a matter that I've raised previously. And this refers to paragraph C of the recommendation. I believe the correct wording should be approve rather than endorse, which suggests a decision's already been made. If I could suggest that to the mover and second, that that be buried, please.
I'm happy with that. I think that's appropriate.
Thank you very much. I'll just see at the moment whether the council endorsed it veresh. Approve. Thank you. So the mover, councillor Kunselman, are you happy to change the word endorse to approve? Thank you. So that is the live motion now. In that case, if there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
I now move on to item 15.3, which is the Report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 5th of September 2023. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
Thanks Mayor. I would like to move the recommendation in front of us, that council adopt the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee number eight for the year.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Just for the committee's awareness, we're excited to recommend that we include NADOC Week and Reconciliation Week in the civic and ceremonial policy, which was a much welcomed update by the committee. And just the ongoing work that happens in the healthy, active space here in council, we saw some really meaningful participation last year with a view to ramp it up even more. The next report, I think, will reflect that. And it would be remiss of me not to highlight the amazing program that we've got for active kids' school holidays coming up, starting next week and flowing through the two weeks. There are so many wonderful free and low-cost events for young people to participate in and get healthy and active these school holidays. So, great stuff.
Yeah. Okay councillor Fekner, it sort of follows on from the work from the West Morton Obesity Committee that meets. It's great to see the healthy and active program expand. And we're sort of very open to residents and on what they'd like to see happen there as well. Thank you. And obviously, there's the event sponsorship for the Tivoli Drive-In for Celebrate 24, as also went through that committee, which is great to see, New Year celebrations coming forward. There's no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Now move on to item 15.4, which is the Report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee of the 5th of September 2023. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you Chair. I move the recommendation and that council adopt the report.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll just note the key visitation data update was really quite compelling. And I don't know, I might actually ask a question of Ms Gregory to come, because I did ask a couple of questions at the committee meeting. I think it would be very important to come forward at the ordinary today.
Good morning. Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions.
Thank you Ms Gregory. We've had this really great surge in overnight visitations. Do you know what the, what do you credit the success for being?
Yeah, we can absolutely see the strategy that's working. A, I think we spoke about last time, there's been a distinct change in intent of the narrative and the kind of marketing we do around destinations. So we know that day visitation pre-COVID was incredible, you know, over 2 million, which is really a city like ours with no beach batting above its average. And we know all those assets and the nature rec, you know, has really grown in last year. So that's great. So we obviously stopped just talking about day trips and talked about short stays to make the most of that. We know with our city events plan, we have engineered the calendar across the city to make the most of bed nights. We know what used to happen was lots of events would come at the same time of year. It was hard to get bed nights, they're limited as it is, and we couldn't take full advantage of that. So we've been very strategic in our planning internally and externally, which is working, excuse me. And obviously, just, you know, making the most of the corporate market surge that we've seen. Yeah, those major events have come back post-COVID. And the one thing that we really know in Ipswich is that locals, so that visiting friends and relatives is really strong. So we thank our residents because they're great, passionate advocates for our city and like to tell friends and family, you know, to come and stay and with that pride, come and see what we've got going.
And Ms, I did ask this question at the last one. I thought it would be important for the ordinary meeting to say that we made a deliberate decision last year to do advertising outside of Ipswich, not just with our, we do a lot of advertising with our local papers and media, but we also did outside, advertising outside of Ipswich. Have we seen a return on that or are we able to measure that?
Yeah, absolutely, seeing a return on that. So for most of the events that we sponsor, it's either every year or every second year. And the events that we produce, we obviously do event impact studies, usually with IER who are recommended by TUQ, so there's that alignment. And we absolutely see the out of region for some of our events. You know, if we think about things like the Winter Nationals, the CMC, even our own Planes Trains Auto, over half the people that attend, sometimes in the 90 percentile, come from outside the region, which is obviously important because the longer they stay, the more they spend, the more they get to experience in our city. So yeah, we're absolutely tracking that spend and where that comes from. So we're getting a really good picture for that now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Ms Gregory? Thank you very much for that. There's no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. I'll hand over to, move to item 15.5, which is the Report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the 5th of September 2023. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number eight of the 5th of September 2023.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion?
Yes Mayor, I'd just like to point out that during that meeting, we had an external presentation. And I'd like to again thank Mr Jonathan Gregory from Denmark Hill Bushcare, who provided committee with a very good presentation on the work that his Bushcare group is undertaking at Denmark Hill and general discussion on all Bushcare groups and the work that they do. It moved then, of course, into officers' reports where the first was an update on the annual Bushcare program. But of the five officers' reports, I would like to just highlight item six, that this week is SES Week, encourages people to wear the best of ties, and that council is lighting the building up, One Nicola Street, each night this week, to acknowledge and thank our 186 active volunteers across the city who are members of the four SES groups at Goodenamar, Burg, Rosewood and Ipswich. And I'd like to again express on behalf of the Ipswich community, the thanks to our SES members.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Yes councillor Tully?
Thanks Mayor. I'd like to speak in relation to item five, Get Ready Queensland Week 2023, and also item six, which the Chair of the committee has just raised SES Week 2023. The first one, Get Ready Queensland, I guess that's the, that's preempting any future issues. And number six in relation to the SES is after the event. But the Get Ready Queensland Week, it's the lead-up to an initiative which aims to increase disaster risk awareness and preparedness in the community. One thing I've found over the years, my involvement in the city, you know, the 74 flood, 2011 flood, the 2022 flood, not long after in the city, you know, the 74 flood, 2011 flood, the 2022 flood, not long after an event occurs, a lot more people start to move into the area, memories fade, and the preparedness, which is quite profound after an event, tends to diminish over time. I think this is a really great initiative to keep this front and centre of people's minds. Ipswich, of course, is liable to flooding on the Brisbane and Bremah rivers. But there's also bushfires, which have affected our community in the past, in Pine Mountain area to the north, to the south, in the White Rock region and the environmental area there. So I just ask people in the community to literally get ready, be aware of it, know what to do in the event of an emergency. And with the disaster risk, which we, along with other councils, can experience, just to be aware of what may need to be done. And of course, with SES, we know what a great job they do and have done and continue to do in our community. So I'd personally congratulate the SES, you know, the Goodna Group, which is now physically based at Red Bank Plains, for what they have done. That's front and centre of my mind and a lot of people, what they did last year, you know, in our community and in years gone by. So these dual motions, I, of five and six, I strongly support.
Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. The next one is 15.6, but it's quite a longer item. I think we're discussing leases. So I'll propose that we break for morning tea and it's 10:26. So I propose that we come back at 11am to have this meeting. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Everyone in the room except for councillor Madsen and councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Those against? And councillor Madsen, thank you. So you're back at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. It's eleven o'clock and we're back at the Ordinary Council meeting for the fourteenth of September, twenty twenty three. And I'll just confirm that we, Council John, that you can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Wonderful. We now move on to item fifteen point six is the report of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee of the fifth of September, twenty twenty three. I'll hand over to the, that chair, sorry. Thank you, councillors. I'll hand to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like this matter dealt with.
Thank you, Chair. I think we will, we will need to separate the matters, so move for items one and two.
Yep.
And then deal with the remainder.
Okay, so we'll move item one and two together and then items three, four and five separately, I'd probably say. Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Cornsman. Any discussion on items one and two from the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee of the fifth of September?
Thank you, Chair. Just further to Council Fekner's commentary around the school holiday programme coming up. It's great to see that the precinct will be once again activated by the NSP team and the events team. Looking forward to the thousands that will be coming through for lots of free and very low cost activities and the visitation numbers that comes through and obviously provides greater benefits for Ipswich Central and our CBD businesses. It's just very exciting.
It is. And I think it's from Wednesday, the twentieth. We've got the spring vibes, free entertainment with kid-friendly DJs.
So if you've got school-aged children, highly recommend getting on to the Ipswich City Council, our events page as well as the Nicholas Street precinct page to check out all of the details. Lock it in.
Thank you. Any other discussion on items one and two? I'll put them either to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Council John, how do you?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item three. I'm just looking for where the going into closed. Item three for this is council looking into entering into a lease. I move that we will move into closed session in accordance with section two five four J three. G for negotiations related to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government and to make sure that we do actually get the best outcome for our residents and our ratepayers. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous in the room. And Council John, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Harrison, let me know when we close. Thank you very much. Harrison, let me know when we close. Thank you. Thank you much. We're back. It is eleven twenty-two. We're back in open session and we're discussing item three of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee lease. So I'll move items A, B, C and D for the approval of a lease for level four one four three Brisbane Street. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just, obviously, the commercial terms of this one are confidential. We've been in closed session discussing. I just wanted to put some comments on the record publicly whether or not, you know, to approve this lease, a consideration has been our Nicholas Street precinct, our strategy of driving pedestrian traffic. And so in relation to this particular deal, I've considered how many bodies, how many staff members will be occupying this particular property. And I made the comment that I most recently spoke with the owners of significant land holdings, properties within our CBD. We have a very large, they have a very large building that sits largely vacant. They've had no interest. Well, that's what they're telling me. The result of that is seeing that particular part of town sitting a little bit idle, sometimes referred to as being a bit derelict. We have ongoing issues with a little bit of antisocial behaviour because the building isn't occupied. So I guess for me, it comes down to, like I said, keeping the lights on, keeping some people within this particular property and getting that pedestrian traffic moving and flowing through the precinct. Yeah.
For me, I mean, this, this particular lease, there's been no one there, no tenant since twenty twenty-one, so I'm delighted to see a tenant come in. It's great to see, you know, more businesses coming in to the Nicholas Street precinct. So it's quite, it's great to see this come through and I'll be supporting that when it comes to the vote.
Mayor, if I can speak.
Yes.
I'm just concerned about the maintenance costs going forward and that it's not really compliant for disabilities, which, you know, all of our government buildings, I believe, are supposed to be. But it's not in the budget for the next four years. It hasn't been budgeted in if there's anything goes wrong with it. So I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room except for Councilor Ireland. Council Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to items, and I'm going to go into.
Point of order, you haven't taken the vote of Councilor Ireland.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Those against, thank you, Councilor. My apologies. Those against Councilor Ireland. Sorry, I took it that she'd already said it. So now we've got Items Three and Four, which are two other leases. So I move that we discuss both those Items Four and Five and go into closed session. I move that in accordance with Section 254-J3-G for negotiations related to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely be to prejudice the interests of the local government and therefore needs to be done the benefits for the residents and ratepayers. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councilor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll go back into closed session. Thank you. It's 11:40. We're back. We've just come out of closed session to discuss two other leases, one for Tumal Walk and one for 143 Brisbane Street. So I'll go to Item Four of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee, which is the lease for Tumal Walk, tenancy 2B-K2. And I'll move motions A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. I'll now open up for discussion. Thank you, Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. Delighted to see this lease come through. I'm always delighted to see lease come through for the precinct. But this particular offering, I'm really excited. Once we're able to announce this one to the wider public, certainly visitors to the precinct, potentially, particularly our younger ones, will be very excited by this offering.
I think it's, it's primarily listed, that spot's the one just next to Gelatissimo. So it's going to be very visible there as well. So it's a great location.
Yeah, and it's just rounding out the tenancies. We've already got them placed there quite nicely. And the mix of tenancy, you know, in closed session, we talked about the reports we've had, our bull and bear reports regarding getting the right mix in place. A lot of work has been done on that. And that, that bull and bear work pulls in analysis from, from other centres around, you know, the, the mix of tenants that work well together, what particular types of food, coffee, gym, you know, getting the right mix is really important to the longevity, you know, the successful longevity of our precinct.
Thank you. Any other discussion or views? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Council Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to Item Five of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. And that's for council enter into a lease for Levels One and Two of 143 Brisbane Street. I'll move Items A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Again, I'll open up for discussion. I'll say I would, I'm delighted to see that we're looking at the other two levels in that, that building to, to be leased out. Again, it brings in the foot traffic. It's a great tenant in, in place and just delighted to see this happening and seeing the activation.
Yeah, it's important, as, you know, we discuss regularly, increasing the pedestrian traffic, not only within our precinct but within our CBD to support our wider businesses is, is critical. You know, there is often discussion around high density residential needed to bring, to bring in the increase of population within our CBD. We haven't had interest from developers at this point in delivering that type of product. We've had feedback from, I think, the Urban Development Institute that there isn't much, I guess, from a financial point of view, it's not stacking up over three stories residential, that is, both within Ipswich Central and, and across Ipswich Central despite a housing crisis, despite, you know, a, a lack of product, residential accommodation. It would make sense that we would see these developments popping up, but not yet, but hopefully soon. In the meantime, every single tenant that we bring to this precinct, it is front and centre that they're helping increase pedestrian numbers to support the businesses.
Thank you. And I think too, yeah, it's a good commercial return for us and that's, we have to look after the bottom line for our residents and rate pays as well as the activation into the Nicholas Street precinct and top of town as well.
Yeah, and a very good point. As much as it's about activating and revitalising, every single deal has to stack up financially and we go through a very complex structured governance process, looking at every aspect of the deal before it's recommended.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We now move on to fifteen point seven, which is the report of the special Ipswich Central redevelopment...
The others being advised that we're now into session to join us? No, I didn't hear a bell.
This is still, sorry, this is still a matter of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. They have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, but it's...
I'm now moving into the report for the meeting.
I think they declared in relation to item fifteen point six. Oh, okay, thank you.
So councillor Johnick can hear as well. Sorry, Nicole, just so you know that...
They did declare in relation to fifteen point six and fifteen point seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I heard. Thank you, Piquet.
Thank you, councillor Tully, because we do need to ensure belt and braces. Thank you.
Keep us all out of jail.
Sorry. Okay, fifteen point seven is the report of the special Ipswich Central redevelopment committee that happened this morning at nine thirty. So those of us who were in the meeting and there's those who weren't to be now sent the paper there. I'll hand over again to the chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you. Chair, I move that the council adopt the report of the special Ipswich Central redevelopment committee.
Thank you very much. This is the report concerning the lease for council consideration with level one of the Eats building at twenty five Nicholas Street. So I assume that we will have some questions that are commercial in confidence. So I will move that to discuss this matter. We'll go into closed session in accordance with section two five four J three G for negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's eleven fifty four AM and we're back into open session for the ordinary council meeting for the fourteenth of September twenty twenty three. We have the motion before us concerning a lease for level one of Eats building on twenty five Nicholas Street. So I'll move A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I now opened up for discussion. I guess in discussion, it's great to see this tenancy. I think it's, we've been very fortunate to be able to, it's quite a large holding there. It'd be a great complement to our Nicholas Street precinct. It'll be a service that is, I think, really appreciated in Ipswich as well and Nicholas Street. So again, activation and really good commercial terms as well. So I'll be supporting this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be supporting it for the same reasons, great commercial terms. But in addition importantly, in these really difficult times, it's great to see this service coming to our CBD. So looking forward to them opening and I understand they will be opening fairly quickly. They are ready to go.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's quite a lot there with the four new leases. I think it's great to see the the Forbury advice and the advice that we are getting to that's being utilised as well as the significant activation these leases will provide, these welcome tenants. So we welcome people with our open arms and I'm sure they're customers as well. I'll now move on to the next item. I'll just wait for the councillors to arrive. Thank you. I'll move now to item sixteen point one. I'll move on to the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for August twenty twenty three. Does anyone have any questions of the CEO on this report? No, in that case I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Tippingy Mayor. Any discussion? I think it's good to see the, under the current significant matters, the customer experience strategy being rolled out. This is something that we've been very passionate about. And it's one that we've spent a couple of years on. So it's great to see this progress. And in particular Snap Send Solve, which a few of us have been using for many years, to see us becoming that enterprise customer as well, which I think is a really great new feature for our residents to report things to us as well. Any other discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. So it's passed. I'll move on to item sixteen point two and that council note the partnership with the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce for the twenty twenty three twenty four financial year at twenty thousand dollars plus GST. Would anyone like to ask council officers if any questions of this agreement? In that case, I will move this. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Kunzaman.
And speaking to this, the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce helps facilitate the growth of Ipswich businesses of all sizes through its support, collaboration and partnerships. The chamber holds a range of opportunities for the local Greater Springfield business community to foster networking and strengthen ties with the community. The chamber created more than thirty networking opportunities for its members over the past year with events such as the business breakfasts, business after hours, lunches, dinners, workshops and coffee catch-ups. Their membership has grown by ninety eight in the past year alone and with over two hundred current members. It can be demonstrated how strong the demand for chamber services are. I think it's important for council to support organisations that endeavour to build our workforce and contribute to a thriving local economy. Council is committed to creating economic opportunities that create jobs and our work with the chamber in strengthening businesses. And it's one of the ways that we can do that. We are the fastest growing city in Queensland and council's financial assistance of the chamber to provide businesses with information, support and networking to grow their businesses benefits the whole community.
Are there any other discussions or points? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Move on to the next one, which is sixteen point three, which is the report on the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the twenty third of August twenty twenty three. Would anyone like to ask a council officer any questions on this report? No? In that case, I will move it. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Kunzaman. Any discussion? I just note that I was an observer to this particular one and I was very impressed with the rigour that the committee put the organisation through. It was really great to see. There's no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Now, we have, just because of the timing of our committee meetings, we have, the finance report is a late report, a supplementary report, so I need to move. So I move that council permit the consideration of supplementary item sixteen point four, total monthly financial performance report for August twenty twenty three. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Peggna. Any discussion? No, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Thank you. So item sixteen point four is the monthly financial performance report for August twenty twenty three. Do we have any questions for council officers on this report? In that case, I will move that this report be accepted and noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Peggna. Any discussion? Because I note, obviously early in the financial year, but how we're managing costs and projects and thank you very much to the organisation for balancing that. There's no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. We're up to item seventeen, notice of motion. And we have a notice of motion from councillor Tully on the removal of two hour parking signs. So councillor Tully, I'll hand over to you for your notice of motion.
Thank you, Mayor. As per the notice of motion, I move that the two hour parking signs on Australia Avenue, Springfield Central, twenty four hours per day, seven days a week be removed forthwith.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that, councillor Ireland? Thank you. Open up for discussion, councillor Tully.
Yeah, as a prelude to speaking to it, I propose a short amendment to add the words at the end of the motion, to add the following words, with a review after twelve months. So it would read, be removed forthwith, comma, with a review after twelve months, if that's acceptable to the second.
That is? Thank you. I'd just like for that to come up.
Thanks, Mayor. This involves some signage which has been put on Australia Avenue, which is just to the north of the Springfield Central Railway Station. And Australia Avenue runs between Eden Stration Drive south to the Springfield Central Railway Station. At the moment, the signs say two P, which means it's twenty four hours a day, seven days a week for the whole year, including public holidays. I've had some feedback from the community, particularly saying why. Because on Australia Avenue, there is no current development, there are no buildings, there are no commercial or other premises, no residential buildings and there won't be in the future. But it's something which vehicles are continuing to park there as they have for several months and face the prospect of being fined by council. I might just present or just refer to, but I'll hold these up so that people understand. That's a picture of Australia Avenue. That's a picture of Australia Avenue heading north, which shows the parking lane of 3.4 metres, a very suitable parking lane. And with a bike lane there as well. And it's quite clear that there is no impediment to drivers or pedestrians using, as a result of vehicles parking there at any time of the day or night. And also took the opportunity today, because I'm still a bit curious about why those signs went up on Southern Cross Circuit, which is just the road encircling the Orion Shopping Centre, near the Pearl. People can see from that photograph, there are no two-hour parking signs there, even though there is adjacent to commercial and recreational activity. And there would probably be a greater need for, you know, a more regular turnover. And the same on Sirius Drive, which runs off Southern Cross Circuit. There are no two-hour, well, no limits on parking there at all. People can park there all day if they wish. It's just, and I don't raise that except to put this into context of how, of how or why these signs are there. And I do understand some of the background to it. But at the end of the day, it's certainly our decision in relation to this particular matter. It seems that some commuters west of Springfield Central are parking there, probably from that Brookwater, Bellbird Park, Red Bank Plains areas, which does take traffic off the Springfield-Greenbank arterial and the railway station car park as well, so that they're not traversing the intersection, you know, to go down onto there. And as I say, in my view, that they are not interfering. Anyone parking there at any time of the day or night is not interfering with any business, not interfering with any, any commercial activity, not creating any safety issue whatsoever. That is an extremely wide car parking lane. And I'm not sure that it's appropriate for that to continue to occur. As I say, I stress again, it's, there are no traffic safety or other issues that would obviously impact on driver safety as a result of these vehicles parking there. The amendment I've proposed is for the following reason. On the eastern side of Australia Avenue, there has been some talk in recent years, public talk about a club, licensed club going there. To the west, that could be an office park development. They're both vacant land at the moment. Now, times change. Times are not going to change very, very quickly. It could be three, four, five or more years before there's any development which would require council to look again at the appropriateness of parking restrictions, whether it was two hours, three hours, whether there's disability zones, whether there was loading zones there. I could see a change being required in some years to come, but certainly not now. And that is the reason for that amendment, to make it clear that it is a fluid situation. But at the moment, in my view, it's a very clear-cut situation in relation to that area. And people are continuing to, even though the signs went up recently, people are continuing to park there. Some of them, I guess, are commuters to the Springfield Central Railway Station. But those people are avoiding the other link, the circuitous route, to get to the existing car park, which has been built by the state government, but which is quickly filling up these days. Now, some people might suggest that, is this an appropriate motion for council to consider? In my view, yes. We represent the community and we're entitled to make a decision, taking into account a whole range of factors, you know, community feedback, the appropriateness of it, the safety and whether or not there is a real necessity for two-hour parking signs at that particular location. And just in conclusion, I'll just, to reinforce that particular provision, section 27A of the Queensland Acts Interpretation Act, which applies to all legislation in Queensland, including the Local Government Act, says that a functional power that has been delegated, and in this particular case, its offices have acted under delegation, says a functional power that has been delegated may, despite the delegation, be performed or exercised by the delegator. And our council has been the delegator in this matter. I just say to my fellow colleagues, I'm very familiar with this area. There are no safety issues of concern. But as I say, the amendment which I've put there does indicate to the council, to the community and to officers that this matter will continue to be reviewed, whether it's on a yearly basis or as development occurs. But for the reasonable time being, which I would, even if development started now, it'd be possibly two or three years before that came to fruition. So I'd ask our fellow councillors to support this to avoid the unnecessary situation of people being fined unnecessarily when there is no substantial reason for them to be fined in utilizing these car parking spaces.
Thank you, councillor Tolly. Councillor Ireland, as the second, do you wish to speak to it?
I'd be with that explanation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Okay. Any questions on notice? No? In that case, I'll close the meeting at 12:11 PM. Thank you very much.